As I normally do, before we get started, if you have a cellphone, either turn it off or silence it, please. Call the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission to attention Wednesday, September 16th, 2015. It's now 7:00 PM. We call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mangleberg is absent. Mayor Holliday?
Here. If you will stand and join me in the flag series.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, as we have been want to do since I became mayor, we do have a proclamation for Constitution Week, which is September 17th through the 23rd. A copy of this will be on the city's website if you wish to peruse it. And did we have anybody here that wanted to talk about this? If you'd just sit down right there and-
Thank you so much.
-give us your name, please.
My name is Deanna Way, and I'm a member of the Susanna Lee Barlowe chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And thank you, Mayor Holliday and Commissioners. Do you recognize these words, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity," do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America? This document is one of the most important documents that my ancestors fought in the American Revolution for. And a lot of people do not know it very well. In 1956, the Daughters of the American Revolution asked Congress to declare September 17th through the 23rd Constitutional Week. President Dwight Eisenhower signed it into being, and since then, we have been celebrating it. Thank you so much for the proclamation for our citizens of Oregon City.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I actually have a full-size copy of the Declaration of Independence framed and hanging on the wall in my house, so-
That's wonderful.
Anybody need any declarations? I mean, the Constitution, I have one here.
No, they've already given this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that take care of 3A. Citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments, Ms. Reed?
None for this item.
Okay. So, moving on, everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
All right, so, public hearings. 15-513, ordinance for introduction. 15-1013, ordinance adopting the Myers Road Extension Corridor Plan and amendments to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan and Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. Tonight, we'll be presenting the Myers Road Extension Corridor Plan and Amendment to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan. This plan established a concept for connecting Myers Road from Highway 213 to High School Avenue. The plan includes a preferred alignment for the street, a proposed section in design. It includes new connections and recommended intersection changes. This legislative item has been reviewed and found to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and statewide planning goals. It was forwarded with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, which reviewed this on August 24th. With the additional recommendations include the following: impacts to wetlands and trees be minimized, and additional striping or marking in the bicycle lane buffer be considered, which we believe Public Works Department and through the presentations that they've made to you in work sessions, as well as additional information that they've provided tonight, have addressed those, but that'll be for your consideration. So, we are recommending approval of the first reading of ordinance number 15-1013. And with that, I'll invite Martin Montalvo up to make a presentation.
So, is this basically the same presentation we got at the work session?
It's slightly smaller. We took out a few slides. The-
Smaller's good.
Yeah. The main thing is that it covers the changes to the Transportation System Plan.
Okay.
We did want to keep a couple of the focal points in there for anybody who hadn't gotten a chance to see those.
I think it will also address the four questions brought up by Ms. Berg, one of the adjoining property owners as well.
So, we're on presentation mode.
So, thank you Commissioners for taking the time to go over this topic with us. With me this evening is John Reblinger, who is part of our project management team and our traffic engineer for the project. Jamie, do you want to-
Maybe. Let's try that again.
I shouldn't be doing it. I'm sorry that that's not- We are having technical issues. Let me-
If you're experiencing technical difficulties, please stand by. Floor Director?
2:05, I'm sitting there.
Doctor, not an electrician.
I apologize, the computer shut down.
Let's pause this discussion for a minute while we get the technical difficulties resolved, and we'll move on to general business, the Heritage Tree nomination, which I don't think needs a- do we need a- is there a slideshow on this?
There's not.
All right, so, Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. Once again, tonight, we'll be presenting a requested Heritage Tree nomination for an Oregon white oak tree located at 314 Pleasant Avenue. The approximately 85-foot-tall white oak with a spread of over 60 feet was nominated by the property owner, Clackamas Soil and Water District. This request was reviewed by the Natural Resource Committee on August 12th, 2015. It was unanimously recommended for approval for the City Commission to consider. Inside of your packet includes information about the tree, pictures of the tree, and the information from the Natural Resources Committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Unfortunately, I don't have a packet in front of me because my machine is currently not functioning. But let me ask a question. So, what does this mean? Does that mean that the tree is protected from being cut down unless it's sick?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that would be, and this was initiated by the property owner themselves. It's a voluntary program that property owners can utilize, and the Soil and Water District, before they decided to sell 314 Pleasant Avenue, felt that this tree was worthy of protection.
So, once it's protected this way, they sell the property, the tree is still protected?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you say the owner was Clackamas Soil and Water?
Yes.
They own that property?
They do.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
That's a pretty good chunk of property. What, any intentions of what that is, what they're going to do there at all, besides save a tree?
I believe they're just, I think they're putting it up to sale. I think they were looking for locations to relocate.
Oh, I see.
Honestly, I don't know the complete history, but-
What's its zone?
Mixed-use corridor, one.
Okay.
Is that tree on a separate lot than the building?
No, it's one tax lot.
Is one tax-
There's no building there.
Yeah.
There was an old one. I think it's been, it's been since removed in some of these pictures.
Right. It's not the, it's not that house that's been sort of fixed and not fixed over the last 20 years.
Okay.
It's okay. Take our time.
Okay.
All right, so, I would, unless there's further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to have the Heritage Tree nomination for Oregon White Oak Tree at the 314 Pleasant Avenue.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Just a quick question. So, what is this, are we approving this?
Yes.
And then it goes forward to somebody else?
Nope. This will be the final approval. It would become one of the trees we've identified. I think this will be the third or fourth tree that we've done on private property with this Heritage Tree nomination. We'll provide a plaque to the property owner to place around the tree.
To screw to the tree?
Right in the middle. No, it goes in the ground in front.
Okay. So, everybody, hey, all right, there we go. Let's see if my packet will come up. Yeah, there we go. So, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, so, we are still having the same issue with the presentation, I think. It's not going to full screen.
Does it need to?
Well, some of, some of these things, I couldn't possibly see unless it's full screen.
It's on full screen over here.
Okay, so, down below the, below the lights, you have the pencil, and then there's that next icon over. You see that? Down, right there, come down to the pencil. I didn't do it. There you go.
Nice.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much for your patience.
Okay, so, we're gonna, we're gonna go back and reconvene the public hearing 15-513. Order for introduction. 15-1013, ordinance adopting the Myers Road Extension Corridor Plan, amendment to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan, Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Montalvo?
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, this is John Reblinger. With me today, working on this project, who is our transportation engineer. The project before you is an amendment to the TSP. Specifically, it's addressing the continuation of the Myers Road Corridor from 213 to High School Lane, the existing Myers Road configuration. It should tie into the school district and Parks Property Road that's going to be going into construction pretty soon. The previous plans that the city had been relying on, the Transportation System Plan, the Regional Plan, all had alternate configurations for the road. One of the goals of this project was to refine each of those plans and come down with a definitive alignment for the road that addressed all the core needs for the corridor, the economic improvement district, and the city, and the private property owners in the area. As I mentioned earlier, this is part of the economic incentive zone, enterprise zone that the city previously had put in place. One of the major goals of the project was to make sure that whatever the alignment was helped to instill and support this economic enterprise zone. So, part of the project is a very thorough outreach effort that we committed to at the onset. There was a project management team that consisted of ourselves, the city's Public Works Department, Planning Department, our Parks Department, Oregon City School District, the Community College, ODOT. We're all daily involved in the project. We also met with the respective neighborhoods associations, so Gaffney Lane and the Caulfield Neighborhood, both of which support the project as it's presented this evening. We met with the adjacent property owners. We worked with them to try and see what modifications could be made that make the project acceptable to all parties. There were some comments that were received recently that I'll speak to at the end of the presentation. We've worked with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission voted unanimously to support the project, as well as the Natural Resource Committees voted to support the project, and the city's Transportation Advisory Committee also voted to support the project. So, as I mentioned earlier, there's an existing school bus facility that's in the final land use process now, as well as the Parks Master Plan that we had to utilize as a starting point. There had been some discussion on some alternate alignments, but all of those alternate alignments would have conflicted with this starting point, which was one of our, our set in stone features that we kind of had to work with. These are the five major intersections that'll be affected by the project. I'll ask Mr. Reblinger to briefly go through each of them to give you an indication of what can be anticipated at each of those locations.
So, before you do that, explain to the folks what the red diamonds are, so that-
Oh, no problem. So, the red diamonds are the existing BP, or Bonneville Power corridor lines. They represent the towers that are out there, and we had to account for those.
Right.
Thank you, Martin. Mayor Commissioners, we analyzed five intersections as part of the project. The analysis was done for year 2035, which is the same year as the Transportation System Plan. The three intersections on Highway 213 are existing signalized intersections at Malala, at Myers Road, and at Caulfield-Glen Oak. The other two, numbers four and five on the screen, are new intersections. Number four would provide the access, new south access to the Community College. Number five would be the intersection of High School Avenue, Loda Road Extension, and Myers Road. In the case of the first three existing signalized intersections, all would remain signalized. Intersection number two at Myers Road is a T-intersection today. There is no east leg. To provide the adequate traffic operations in year 2035, it would be very similar to what exists today at Malala and Highway 213. There would be, there would need to be a second northbound lane on Highway 213. A lot of the reason for that is the increase in traffic from South Oregon City and from Clackamas County. Not necessarily related to the development of Myers Road, but a regional growth project. The configuration on both the eastbound and westbound legs of Myers Road at the intersection would eventually need to have a left-turn lane, a through lane, and a right-turn lane. That will provide adequate operations for Highway 213. And as I said, it's pretty similar to what exists at Malala today.
And are we currently on the right-of-way for that?
There is perhaps a little bit of right-of-way needed, most, a little bit on the east side of the road, and there would certainly need to be a construction easement that would be a little bit wider.
On the west side of Myers, we have enough room there?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Same question, but for High School Avenue at Myers Road going into the school properties, where it shows Loda Road coming in eventually. Currently, that road is school district property?
Yes.
It is?
Yep.
In response to the question about the right-of-way at Myers, I believe there is a bit of, to accommodate a right-turn lane on eastbound Myers Road, there would probably need to be a dedication of some additional property in that southwest quadrant of the intersection that could occur when development occurs on that property.
To piggyback on Commissioner Smith's question, one of the conditions on the land use approval for the school district property was the dedication of the needed right-of-way to complete the extension of Loda Road. So, there's also a condition, I believe, that they have to construct it within five years. I have to clarify that, but I'm pretty sure that's accurate.
And is that going to be a two-lane?
Two-lane.
Two-lane with sidewalks and bike lanes and all that stuff?
I believe so. I don't know the exact conditions that were set on that road within the school district's approval.
Okay.
The intersections for the, sorry, number four and number five were expected to operate fine with the stop control. The intersection of Myers and High School Avenue, we've probably four-way stop control, stops sign in each direction. For intersection number four, providing access to the Community College, there would be a stop sign for the Community College leg of it only. That's the, kind of, the highlights of it, adequate operations in year 2035.
This is just a summation of the information that Mr. Reblinger had just presented to you. Again, further summation of the information that we just presented to you. We do want to point out that the intent of this is to support the economic enterprise zone, proper development of the parcels for the properties, and to support the school district, both in their high school and the Community College property out there. This is the final preferred alignment, as you can see. This is a hybrid of three different alignments that have been initially considered. This alignment gives us a 30 mile-an-hour program speed limit for it, nice, smooth radiuses that allow for natural traffic calming, and it also gives us the connectivity that we need to the school districts and the Community College properties, as well as affording all of the adjacent properties economic access to the properties, or to the road, I should say.
Would we anticipate other traffic calming, other than the nice, smooth curves with the, you know, 17-year-old high school drivers?
So, one of the reasons that, and it was one of the questions that was brought up by Mr. and Mrs. Berg, is why aren't we going with a four-lane configuration? So, the project management team came up with a preferred, a three-lane configuration with a planted median. So, you've got trees on either side, a planted median with breaks in there for turn lanes. That has a natural calming, traffic calming effect, rather than simply having two lanes bidirectionally, gives everybody almost a sense of a freeway. What we're trying to do is make this as a connector road, but also give it a sense of place as a, more of a residential to some extent. It will support the campus industrial use just because of the size of the lanes that we configured. These are 12-foot-wide lanes. So, it gives us a good mix of the campus industrial usage, as well as trying to give us some natural traffic calming.
So, sorry, but I, having just raised three high schoolers, beyond that, are we thinking about any kind of actual, like, speed bumps or anything in there?
Not for this road. The classification of road that it's listed at and the speed, speed bumps along that would be a concern for us. It is 30 miles an hour is what it's programmed for. John, would you have any-
In addition to which, it is designated as an industrial truck street, so it would not be appropriate to have speed bumps on that either.
Okay. So, what are we going to do when the inevitable occurs? That is, we get kids coming out of the high school going 45 or 50 miles an hour on that street?
I think that's where Chief Ben might come in.
Oh, sure, dump it off on the chief.
Well, at least, you know.
All right, I'm just asking the question, because, you know-
In terms of the design parameters, we tried to limit the radiuses as much as possible. The alternatives that we looked at had much more aggressive turns in there, which would have made the road much, much less safe than it currently is.
Okay.
We came up with a design speed that was set at 30 miles an hour. It, it's going to rely a little bit more on some of the enforcement and, you know, driver knowledge, but it were, they were conscientious decisions that we took into place.
All right.
Can you go back one slide, please?
Sure. Sorry.
It's okay. So, one of the public comment letters was talking about a jog in the road. I don't see a jog in the road. Do you know if that's referred to?
So, I believe the letter that you're speaking of came from Mr. Saunders, who owns the parcel that's depicted in the middle there. And what he is referring to is the jog in the road directly at the middle of the bus facility and the Parks Property, and wondering why that jog was put in there. That was trying to align with the existing property lines that were out there and lay the road out so you didn't compromise park property or school district property. So, that's the jog that I believe he was referring to, which also, if you take a look at, his request was to try and move our alignment of the road further south onto the Keiths' property, which also, it increased the size of the radiuses for those turns, which posed a problem for us.
Okay, but, but it's a smooth road.
It is.
There's no, like, okay.
There are no tight curves here that pose a consideration that we were worried about. John?
Thank you.
Right, there are, there are some minor things in terms of the alignment, the alignment of how the lanes line up, say, from one side of High School Avenue to another, but they're all within the accepted design standards, and you are unlikely to notice them as a driver. It, it would be designed to a safe, modern standard.
So, it's not that Gaffney Lane road jog that we have?
No.
There's no offset in the curb. Everything will have a smooth curb alignment to the entire road.
That's a doozy there.
Okay, moving on.
So, this is the preferred street typical. Some modifications that we'd made to this as a result of the Planning Commission, increased the sidewalk to six feet and decreased the bike buffer to two feet from three feet. That also was a safety consideration that was put in. This is not a deployment that we've used before in the city that we're looking forward to seeing how this works. We've also agreed to stripe that bike buffer to make it a little more visible for the driver. These are the pertinent portions of the Transportation System Plan that are going to be affected. There are a total of seven points within the Transportation System Plan. None of them are wholly being eliminated. Most of them are being modified slightly. The most prominent one is the elimination of a roundabout that was proposed for Loda Road and Myers Road. John can state to the fact that his analysis showed that a four-way intersection there would function normally for the next 20 years.
That's correct. And a, another consideration with a roundabout is the difficulty of designing it for smooth movement by trucks makes it very easy for people in automobiles to drive through it very fast. So, that's, it's a compromise that probably results in an undesirable condition. A roundabout also requires a greater footprint, which means it has more impact on adjacent property owners, and the final analysis was the intersection would operate fine through year 2035 with stop control.
So, are we anticipating that there would be heavy truck traffic westbound on Myers and then turning right onto High School? Or do we expect that they would take out to Beaver Creek, or out to Beaver Creek Road?
It's designated in the Transportation System Plan as a local truck route, rather than a regional or through route. So, I think the expectation is it would depend in part upon what kind of development occurred on the industrial land. If it tends to be more of a research park, there might be very little truck traffic, other than the, sort of, the typical box truck, the uniform service, the-
Right.
FedEx. If it ends up being something that is much more manufacturing-oriented, we could see semi-trailer trucks. So, it is going to depend upon the development of, you know, about that 30 acres of industrial along Myers Road and another 20 or 30 along Loda Road.
So, we could sign High School and Myers, so going eastbound on Myers. At High School, you could sign that as a no right turn for trucks? Because I don't think you want, I don't think you want trucks going on High School down to Glen Oak, right? Is that, is it legal for us to sign that as a no right turn for trucks?
I'm, I'm not sure what the legislative requirements are.
Okay.
We'd have to research that for you. I don't have an answer. I'll help my head for you on that one. So, the last item, and I apologize, I did not include it within my PowerPoint, but I did prepare a written response for the record that I had submitted earlier. Mr. and Mrs. Berg had posed some questions to City Commission on the, on the second, specifically regarding four items, one of them being the lack of on-street parking. So, there were several points that I made to answer this question, the primary one being that the transportation, that the proposal that we have this evening does provide- being that the transportation, that the proposal that we have this evening does provide on-street parking on the southern portion of the road, not on the northern portion. That was done deliberately for safety purposes, to eliminate attractive nuisance issues with kids trying to run across the street to get to the park, also to eliminate sightline issues with the bus barn trying to pull out cars there, and then potentially causing conflicts. There is ample parking that's represented on the south side of the road. Any development that comes in there would have to comply with whatever requirements are made upon them through our development code for providing parking for their purposes. Secondarily, Mrs. Berg had requested for a four-lane intersect, or a four-lane configuration, rather than a three-lane configuration. I spoke to that earlier. We chose a three-lane configuration deliberately to try and give us some natural traffic calming measures, as well as a few other points. She had mentioned crosswalks, as to why there are no crosswalks depicted here. This is a 50,000-foot elevation look. Crosswalks are depicted in the plan, they're gonna be noted wherever there is an intersection. At this time, we don't know where the intersections are going to be in terms of curb cuts for any developments. As they come in, those will be imposed upon them as part of their development action. And finally, they had asked as to why their property was being given such little frontage on the road. We did go through the plan set earlier, they have 230 feet of road frontage that is provided to them with this alignment. That's two and a half times the width of the road itself. We feel that's more than ample. With trying to come up with an alignment that minimized the curve radiuses as much as possible and gave us a nice, smooth transition, the alignment that we came with gave everyone as much opportunity to front on the road as we could. There are two remnant properties that belong to the school district. The Bergs and their business partner had asked us, could we facilitate some sort of land swap? And we expressed to them, the city is not gonna become involved in that at this point. That's a private property deal that the community college and any interested parties could approach one another upon.
And did you, and did you write back to her and answer her questions, or are you trying to do that tonight?
I've submitted this for the official record, and I'm presenting it this evening. I will send it to the Bergs in writing as part of the transcript.
Okay.
That's the end of our presentation. Appreciate your time.
Okay, so now, I will open the public hearing, and do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Hey, can we start using our request to speak thing, so I can, because I can't see everybody all the time? Commissioner Smith?
For sake of transparency, I just wanna remind everyone, I am an employee of the school district. Not that it, I think, affects this, but if anyone has concerns about that.
Is that it? Any further discussion?
Got hit.
Pretty thorough job here, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. This is, yeah, so redoing a first and second reading, or?
I believe we're scheduled for a first reading.
Doesn't say that here.
The staff report recommended action is first reading.
Okay, so I would entertain that motion.
I'll move for approval, ordinance to reintroduction number 15-1013, and ordinance adopting the Myers Road Extension Corridor Plan, and amendment to the Oregon City Transportation Plan, System Plan, and a comprehensive plan.
First reading. Mr. Kabizman. Oh, I need a second, sorry. Commissioner Polly, so, moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Polly, Mr. Kabizman.
Ordinance number 15-1013, an ordinance adopting the Myers Road Extension Corridor Plan, amendment to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan, and comprehensive plan.
Call or roll?
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
So, moving on to general business, we've already nominated three. So, we're on to Resolution 15-29, a resolution interpreting term designated as a park, in quotations, as set forth in Chapter 10, Section 43 of the City of Oregon City Charter. Mr. Lewis?
And I will be presenting for Mr. Lewis tonight.
Okay.
In his absence. On August 5th, concerns were raised related to the history of adopted comprehensive plans zoning for Waterboard Park. More specifically, the question was raised as to whether or not the upper yard area of the Public Works Operations Center was designated park via past comprehensive plan designation. At the August 19th City Commission meeting, staff presented a discussion that was supported by a detailed written response to the concerns raised by the citizen. The City's City Commission discussed the history of the past Oregon City comprehensive planning, as covered in the detailed written response. The City Commission agreed that the upper yard of the Public Works Operations Center was not a designated park, and that staff bring back to the City Commission a resolution confirming the decision to interpret the term designated as a park as set forth in the charter. Tonight, this afternoon, we received some additional information from Mr. Bus that we've forwarded to you. We have not had the chance to go through it all at this point. I would recommend that if you so desire, you can either move forward with your recommendation for your direction to us to adopt the resolution, or you could, this isn't a time-sensitive issue. We could continue this, you could take testimony from anyone in the, here tonight who wishes to testify, and then continue this to a date certain, which would also allow yourselves, as well as ourselves, the ability to read and review what was submitted this afternoon.
So, let me state my preference, and that is, is there was a, a large and extensive set of things that came from Mr. Bus and the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I was able to review some of it, some of it was not available, because it could not creep past our, our city servers due to size limitations. My preference would be, we take the testimony of the folks that are here tonight, and then bring this back, say, sometime in October. This does not put a hold on the planning piece moving forward, correct?
Does not.
Okay, so, I think we could, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith? All right, then, we have at least two folks. Is there more than that?
No, just two.
Okay, so, Mr. Bus and Mr. Nocida, you wanna come up? Mr. Bus, are you officially representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association?
I am, so I had to request the five minutes, please.
You may have it, sir.
Thank you. I want to first start off, I thank the mayor and commissioners for letting us testify here tonight. Again, apologize for the delay. We received the agenda at the same time you did, late last Friday, and then there was the weekend, and
Sure.
We all have full-time jobs, so we did the best we could. Thank you for the extension of time for you to review that without making a decision tonight. So, I understand not everything has been reviewed, it would have been impossible to do that. What I submitted via email, excuse me, was the letter, as well as these smaller attachments, which are really the operative attachments. I would normally put people on the spot, but, Mayor, I know you've had a chance to review some things. Other commissioners, have you had a chance to review at least the letter?
Most of it.
Okay, okay. So, I'll, I'll back up. This is supplementary to last month's discussion. It's additional research that I've done, that I think bears on the issue of the legal status of Waterboard Park, and I'm, again, authorized by the neighborhood to speak on this issue. Something that wasn't brought up before, when the primary discussion was about the 2004 comprehensive plan, was the 1991 Parks Master Plan and the 1999 Parks Master Plan. It took some doing to track down the 1991 Parks Master Plan with some help from the city recorder and Ms. Reed. We tracked that down from the original consultants who developed it, and that's attached as the map to the 1991 Parks Master Plan. It looks like this, and it should be in front of you. I provided seven copies, there should have been enough for each of you, plus the city recorder and Mr. Kabizman. It was not in color, but you can tell by looking at the shading here, that the existing parks are black, the proposed acquisition parks are gray, and you can, you can make out which is which on the map. And Waterboard Park, including what the McLaughlin Neighborhood is now calling the lower Waterboard Park, as opposed to the upper yard, which we think is more accurate historically, is entirely black, designated as an existing park. The 1991 Parks Master Plan was adopted by ordinance, which would comply with a strict reading of Chapter 10, Section 42, designation of parks within the city. It's true, there's very little discussion of this within the master plan, but you wouldn't expect that for parks that were already designated. The next map is from the 1999 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, just the updated version of the 1991 plan. It's labeled 1998, but it was actually adopted in 1999. This one was not adopted by ordinance, this was adopted by majority vote of the commission, never went to a resolution or ordinance that I could find. And this shows the same outline of Waterboard Park, including lower Waterboard Park, where the armory and the other buildings are, and it's clearly designated as an existing park. That master plan was adopted as an ancillary document to the 2004 update, both in June and December. As I understand it, ancillary documents to the comprehensive plan have the force and effect of the comprehensive plan. The third map is the public ownership map, dated April 7th, 2004. It shows parks in green and quasi-public designation in blue. This was actually submitted, you may notice, it's labeled Attachment A Exhibit 1. This was part of a agenda packet during the 2004 comprehensive plan update. So, this was right in there, in the thick of it, it was not a separate process. It was concurrent with the June 2004 master plan, so I don't want to represent that this is a separate process, it's the same process. But it does suggest that there's more intent than a mistake having been made in designating lower Waterboard Park or the upper yard as a park. The largest part of what I've submitted tonight in writing in hard copy is meeting notes from DECA Architecture from 2004, starting January 20th through July 15th. And this represents all of the available meeting notes from that time. In December 2003, the City Commission hired DECA to develop a operations facilities master plan for Public Works. It actually took two years to develop, it was initially supposed to take six months, so this was relatively early on in the process, and these notes simply reflect the discussions that were, were had during that timeframe. So, January 20th, 2004, which is the first page of that meeting notes packet, says on the second page, under review site options, there are seven site locations considered for review at that time. None of those options were the current facility, they were all off-site. If you go through these meeting notes, it, it goes through July 15th, and up until the July 15th meeting, there had always
Mr. Bus, you're out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I continue?
We have pretty strict rules, and we try to stick to them, so.
Is that three minutes? He's the neighborhood?
He got, he got five minutes.
You got five, okay.
Okay, so, I apologize, but that's just part of the, part of the commission rules.
I respect the rules. Please review the packets submitted, and we'll revisit the session.
We will, and like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna move this down the road, and we're gonna have an exhaustive discussion about it, I'm certain of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Nocida.
Thank you, good evening, commissioners. I apologize, my printer ran out of ink, so I only have enough copies for the record and for each one of the commissioners, and I hope they can be shared as I, as I speak. I'm here tonight to talk briefly about another part of the planning process from the same period of the 2004 comprehensive plan, that is, the 2004 Trails Master Plan, which was adopted by ordinance on November 3rd, 2004, ordinance number 04-1011. It, too, shows Olive Waterboard Park designated in green as park, all the way down to Center Street, and I attached on the second page the legend that that shows parks in green. The point I want to make about this, because I think Mr. Kabizman's resolutions goes to the need for specificity in designating something, and my point about this map is, it shows in fine detail both existing trails and proposed trails, both within Waterboard Park and leading to and from Waterboard Park. So, the amount of thought that went into the generation of this Trails Master Plan and Trails Master Plan map, I don't think leaves any doubt that everything on it was intentional, including the designation of Olive Waterboard Park down to Center Street as park, to be consistent with both the Parks Master Plan of 1999 and the comprehensive plan that, plan that was adopted earlier that year in June of 2004. And pursuant to Section 43, I think this is independent authority that Waterboard Park was designated as a park prior to the designations of Waterboard Park as public or quasi-public, I think in December of 2004. And since it was designated as such, I believe that this is independent authority that to move forward with a different use at this point would require a public vote pursuant to Chapter 10 of the charter. I think it would also require public hearings and amending both the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Trails Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this subject tonight? Okay, then, I would entertain a motion to, October 7th, move this to a date certain, October 7th.
I move to move this to a later date for consideration.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, moving on. Where were we? There we go. First reading of ordinance 15-1014, amending Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04, transient room tax. Mr. Parnell?
Thank you, Mayor Holliday, members of the City Commission. So, it's your commission goal-setting retreat in January, there was a healthy discussion about the value of tourism to our local businesses, and for livability within the community for our residents. And as part of that discussion, you directed staff to do a study of the transient lodging tax rate programs across the state, and the results of that study were presented at the last work session, if you recall. And in short, the Oregon city is below the market rate, and this ordinance would bring us from 4% to 6%, which is the mode within surrounding jurisdictions. In addition, the ordinance calls for some changes to code to bring it into alignment with Oregon revised statutes, changes that are recently made to address lodging intermediaries such as orbits and price line. Two quick things I want to mention is, first, there's a slight corrective revision to the draft ordinance that was originally published. It's only in substance, not in form, it just makes the correct percentages for how the proceeds would be allocated. And if the commission proceeds with the first reading, the city attorney, Bill Kabizman, will read that section for the public. The second thing, I just wanted to thank you, mayor, and commissioners for some insight you provided at the work session, asking about bed and breakfasts around the city, and specifically, Commissioner Mangleberg asked about Airbnb. So, I hopped on my computer the next day, and it turns out there's about 30 bed and breakfasts operate under Airbnb. And so, currently, they're collecting taxes only for Steve of Portland, no one else in the state has
Right.
reached out to them like Portland has, but we will be soon. So, I want to thank you for your guidance on that. Very appreciated, very appreciated on that. So, with that, I'll, happy to entertain any questions, otherwise ask that you please move to have the first reading of the ordinance.
I move the first reading of 15-503 of the ordinance number 15-1014.
Second.
Mr. Kabizman?
Yes, it's ordinance number 15-1014, an ordinance amending Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 3.04, transient room tax. Because there was a change to the, to what it was posted as, I'll read that section, affected section in full. The new section shall read as followed, follows, 3.04050, tax disposition. At least 90% of transient room taxes collected by the city shall be accounted for separately to fund tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. No more than 10% shall be accounted to fund general city services.
Any other discussion? Call or roll?
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? So, does anybody wish to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Shaw.
I'm good.
Okay.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Shaw, call the roll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Holliday.
Aye.
And we're off to the races. Communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, we'll start communications tonight with Mr. Archer concerning a discussion about looking at some cemetery property for the operations center. Mayor and Commissioner, at the last, at the last regular meeting, a citizen brought up the idea that consideration for the public works site would be given to the cemetery property, specifically, I think it was in reference to what's kind of commonly referred to as the new part of the cemetery, which is the flat part that you see upon entering just to the right.
Behind the old house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And what we did was pulled some numbers on the number of burials that we actually have in there, because it looks, it could be deceiving, because basically that section has a rule that there's flat headstones. So, if you just look across that, you see an open lawn, and think maybe there aren't that many burials. We actually, in fact, have, at the current time, we have five hundred and eighty-five burials in that section. And we've pre-sold, which means reserved locations for three hundred and sixty-eight other sites, so it's quite a significantly used part of the cemetery. It was suggested that it was minimally used, and there were not that many burials, so, it's quite a few. So, we just wanted to follow up in the public meetings.
So, approximately how much, between the reserved and the actual used plots, how much is left of that site?
Probably about half or so, that's not, that's not an exact number, I'm just kind of ballparking it.
And the general size of, if it was empty, how many acres is it?
I don't know the acreage of that site exactly, it's
Ballpark?
Probably between two and three, but...
Oh, so it's, so it's way smaller than what we need, anyway.
Again, I would have to, you put me on the spot, so I may not be giving you very good information, but yeah.
No, I'm just trying to get, yeah, we can get it, okay.
In that neighborhood.
All right. Is that it?
That's it, yeah, just...
Questions for Mr. Archer?
Yep.
Mr. Manager.
An update from Library Director Cole.
Oh, goodie.
Pictures? Oh, good.
More gravel? Maybe a trench or two?
Some wood.
Yeah, more gravel. Good evening, Commissioner.
Just gonna laugh when there's female, when there's some concrete down and stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna be laughing there and there.
There we go.
Get lighter. So, just really, really briefly, I just want to let you know that they're putting in the forms for the footers, they hope to be pouring concrete early next week. There's a nice little shot with all the plans laid out. And there's concrete forms going in over by the back stairs. I like the shot because he's cutting rebar and there's sparks flying. It smelled really bad, too. So, let's see here, can't really see it, but, so, they're getting ready to pour concrete as well in the back of the building where the steel is gonna go up to support that back wall. So, it's progressing, and basically, I just wanted to kind of show you, in case you don't go by, kind of what it looks like now, and I hope you look at the construction cam, which, you know, it's kind of like watching a baby, you know, from day to day, it doesn't look like that much happens, but when you start from the beginning, it's real obvious that we are making progress indeed, and everything seems to be going along fine, we're still having our weekly meetings, and as a fundraiser device for the kids and their pennies and their dimes and nickels and quarters, one of our staff built this.
That's cool.
And it's designed to drive us even more crazy with noise because there's bells on it. And then... Is that in the children's department? That's in the children's department, and then this is gonna be what our first T-shirt looks like. And that's it for tonight, thank you very much, any questions?
No. And I apologize, but, you know, I've been doing construction for twenty-five years, so, anyway.
No, that's fine. And anytime you don't want this, just let me know.
No, the rest of them want it, that's fine.
Just two more quick announcements, Thursday, September twenty-fourth, a collaborative forum, Oregon City Assistant Development Charges, will be a presentation put on by the city in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce.
Start's when?
Nine AM to twelve PM at the Museum of the Oregon Territory on the third floor. On Thursday, September twenty-fourth. My last one is that we have the opportunity, the chamber's putting on another event, Congressional and State Legislative Update Eggs and Issues Breakfast, U.S. Congressman Kurt Schrader, Senator Rosenbaum, Representatives Kenner, Fagan, Reardon, and Barton, they'll be here on Wednesday, September twenty-third, seven AM to nine AM at Abernathy Center. It is twenty-five dollars per person to register, so opportunities to ask questions to representatives on legislation and what's been happening.
So, if any of you want to go, contact Katie or Jamie, and they will register you for that event.
That is all I have for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw.
Okay. Not much tonight, Mayor, went to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meeting, and with Mr. John Lewis, and I think Martin was there, too, kind of going over the public works plan with them, and then also the, had our regular library building committee meeting, and, you know, it's interesting how much construction activity is around, going on around the state, just that rebar you saw that was being sawed, and the sparks, that was like, I think, a week late because of the amount of activity that's going on in the state right now, trying to get rebar right now, so, anyway. One thing I forgot to mention last time was, you know, I went to that training session and asked Doria for the South Fork Waterboard, and by one of us attending that, we saved two thousand dollars a year on our insurance, so, anyway, there you go, that's it.
Commissioner Smith.
I went to the police advisory meeting last night, correct? For the presentation on use of force, that was very interesting, and a lot of school personnel there, too, and people from the community, learned a little bit, knew a little bit, but it was worthwhile, and it was fit.
As the son of a police officer, I would think they would know a little bit.
Little bit.
I was only disappointed by one thing, Chief Van Beld that is some kind of a demonstration, and I didn't get to see anybody taken down or anything, so, I was disappointed in that.
We could do that, we could do that.
Well, it could have been.
Do that right now.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Commissioner Polly.
Well, I'll probably just mention a couple of things that you will mention. One is the Rediscover the Falls presentation that was down Rocky, and I went to that one, down at the Portland Art Museum. And it was, a lot of people from our community came, and there were many new faces I'd never seen before, and people are just all around the whole region, it really is a regional project, and it was great to see all the support. Everybody involved in the River Walk planning process was there, and they made their presentations. So, it was really interesting to see the three firms and what they specialize in, and they're really looking at this from a layered approach, not just a one angle, but really getting all those layers in of the complex site, and trying to include, you know, everything and deal with the existing site. So, that was, it was, it was good. And then, to follow up, a couple of days later, we had the Lamont Falls Legacy Partners meeting at the moot, and things, things are just going along really well, there's, the planning is going well.
Okay, so, I did not make it to the Portland Art Museum, and that is totally my fault, I did not get it on my schedule, so, my phone didn't remind me that it was gonna be there, so, I apologize to Tony, I think he thought I was gonna be there, and he got kind of put on the spot a little bit, so, I apologize, Mr. Manager. The other thing, you know, I went to the Lamont Falls Legacy Partners meeting, you know, that, that group is, you know, the state, the county, us and Metro are working together to move this project forward, and, you know, we're maintaining all our partnerships, relationships, and I think, you know, that's continuing to move forward. The one thing I did, hang on, I gotta look at something. Oh, yeah, okay. So, the big thing this week is that today, I went to the Tri-City Sewer Advisory Committee meeting along with our representative, Mr. Conkel, and for the first time in several years, we have all three cities on the same page. So, we had a unanimous vote to...
Reject the bylaw, the proposed bylaws.
To reject the county suggestion of the bylaws to merging the districts and adding a bunch of other people to the, to the mix. We also voted to reject and respond to the River Health Advisory Committee's suggestion that we merge the districts and combine the boards, and what was the third one?
Stop the right-of-way appeal.
Oh, and, and the three cities voted unanimously to ask, advise the county as the board that we do not wish to proceed with appeals on the right-of-way, right-of-way ordinance. So, I think, you know, we've been working towards this goal all along, I think we've gotten there, and we'll keep pressing forward, but our intent is to regain control of our sewer district and be able to have reasonable rate increases, understand what we need to do going forward as far as biosolids, and maintain the ability for all three of our cities to grow at the rate that they can and will grow without subsidizing growth in northeast Clackamas County and that area up there. So, that has been a lot of work, many hours of both the manager's and I, and my time, as well as significant contributions from Mr. Lewis and Mr. Paulson in Public Works. I think it is time that is, is well-invested in making sure that the citizens of Oregon City, Gladstone, and Westland have control of their wastewater system well into the future. And apparently, Mr. Smith has one more thing to say.
I just forgot to mention that this has been a busy few weeks. Me and Commissioner Mengeleberg were at the opening of the Orange Line on Saturday, and so, we attended that event with, well, dignitaries from all over the area on the first MAX train into downtown, it was pretty incredible, and tons of people, tons of people, everywhere. And the first train basically left Milwaukee, it was supposed to leave at eight, but it ended up leaving at eight-thirty, but it went into downtown for the opening ceremony, and then came back as all the other events were just starting to open for the public, and as the train went by every station, there was, I would say, literally hundreds of people at each station just waving at the train, I mean, it was, it was kind of incredible. Even more so than how I remember the Green Line opening, it was way more of a spectacle, I guess, in terms of the amount of people there and celebration for it, so, we enjoyed that, and it was, it was a great event.
That's it? Okay. Yeah, that's it for me, too. So, if we don't have anything else, under ORS one ninety-two dot six six zero two F, we were going to adjourn into executive session. We don't expect, in fact, we will not be coming out of executive session back into regular session, so I can release all of you to go on about your merry ways, and we adjourn.